Call the meeting to order. It's a meeting of January 4th, 2010. Happy New Year. We'll note that all commissioners are present. First item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
I may.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Second item is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss?
Mr. President, I'd like to discuss item D a little bit.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, go ahead.
Just want to understand what's behind the purchase agreements. Mr. Stinson buying the two different tracks and us buying the one. How committed we are to that or how obligated we are to that, why that is happening and just where we are on that.
If I may?
Please.
Okay. Commissioner Jackson and the commissioners, back is, just to give a little background on the whole deal, this is a result of the tornado, the July tornado. The property that the city would be purchasing is the exact location of four apartments that were essentially destroyed due to the tornado. They were beyond 50 percent of their value was destroyed. Our zoning at the time was changed about 10 years ago and does not allow multifamily housing units to be located on that property any longer. It's now zoned R1, which means only single-family homes can be located there. This, of course, posed a problem for the owner of that property since he couldn't rebuild those apartments in that space. So through an effort to relocate that Section 8 housing, a deal was formed, a verbal deal was formed, so that the city would become the owner of that property and we would also sell land to facilitate the transfer of those 30 Section 8 units and potentially additional units. Back in October 23rd, I issued a memo regarding this to these, to the, to U.S. Commissioners. It's changed slightly in that the one piece of land that they're buying has moved a little bit north. It's no longer next to the drainage ditch. It's actually directly east of a current development that Metro Plains has made. So I think it's safe to say that after the tornado, the intent, of course, was to provide for our residents, was to get Section 8 housing replaced in our community as quickly as possible. The deal was made with good intentions. Now, I think it's also safe to say that the Metro Plains is moving forward as quickly as they can with the construction of townhome units to replace the 30 on the south side with quite a few more, could be potentially in the 60s, so double the amount of units. But that the south side property is no longer necessary to making the deal happen. I do feel, however, that we are under a moral obligation to continue with that purchase. We have had at least three property owners express interest in that, in those, that land or that area. So I do feel that selling the land and breaking out, or breaking even on it is likely. But I don't think that it's unnecessary to make the other Section 8 housing land, or Section 8 development, happen. So I'll be happy to, hopefully I answered your question. If not, I'll be happy to try again.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Frenzel.
I would tend to agree with Mr. Kessel that even though the participants have shifted roles somewhat in the transaction from when we started, there still is a, perhaps a moral obligation on our part to acquire the property on the south side. The issue that I've got, though, is that now the land that they're buying is changed, not the same property that we talked about originally. And I'm questioning the discounted price that we offered them on the other property, whether that should apply to the new property that they're asking for as of today. I have a question that, on that issue.
Mr. Kessel, any response to Mr. Frenzel's concern?
Yeah. The land that he makes reference to was part of a drainage ditch and we were going to subdivide that drainage ditch to provide a buildable plot, a parcel of land. That was going to be sold at $250 a square foot at the time. And the parcel that is now under consideration is in, it currently exists, there's no need for, to subdivide it in any fashion. I fail to recall the exact square footage of that land. The price itself is around 100, is $130,000. But I can't give you the square footage to break that down, to equate it to $250, or if it was, you know, less than that. Mr. Soren, if I may, do you recall the square footage of that parcel?
I believe it was right around 47,000 square feet, 45 to 47.
Okay. So anybody who can do math quicker in their head can...
And it's being sold, I'm sorry, being sold for what dollar amount?
130.
130. Well, that 135 would be 45 times 3, so it's not, it should be, I think, closer to $3 a square foot, which is what you're suggesting.
It's close to.
It would be.
Mm-hmm. It's more than the $250 we were getting, we were going to get for the land south of
Mr. Jackson, do you have any follow-up questions or comments?
I just want to be comfortable with, you know, all things being equal, I don't know why the city is buying property and I understand that Mr. Stinson's probably prepared to proceed with his project regardless. So that just makes me ask the question, why is the city buying property? Now, if there was some commitment made early on and it sounds like maybe the players, the makeup of the players have changed a little bit, at least, I guess that's what's prompting my question. If we can, if we can sell the land without us purchasing the land on the south side as a city, I would think that'd be the way to go. But like I say, if we have made this commitment...
Maybe you can further explain why you think we have a moral or ethical obligation to purchase land on the south side?
If we rewind the clock back to September and October, that's when this deal was, as I say, verbally discussed. That was a time when those apartment complexes were, the decision hadn't been made yet and if they were going to be able to rebuild, the zoning issue was brought up. There was a lot of things going on. Obviously, our stance at that time was they cannot be rebuilt, they're more than 50 percent damaged, they need to be relocated and built somewhere else. Obviously, we didn't want to lose 30 low-income units in our community and that was a real possibility with the Section 8 housing contracts that exist. And I'm not an expert on Section 8 housing. I've certainly learned a lot more than I did before. So our intent was to preserve those 30 units in our community. In order to do so, it looked like the best way to do that was to facilitate a quick transfer of land, both on the sales side and then to divest them of land, get them out from underneath the land that they owned on the south side. And the quickest way to do that was, of course, to purchase that ourselves. And so in the memo of October 23rd, you know, I can read that, I hesitate to do that, but "The July 8th, 2009 tornado devastated a complex of Section 8 apartments that has caused an already tight housing market to become even tighter and adversely affecting some of our more vulnerable residents. The site was rezoned from R3 to R1 over a decade ago. This change no longer allows the multi-unit apartments to be rebuilt on-site. Section 8 guidelines include provisions that limit the number of covered units in a geographic area. For these reasons, other property was needed to recover the housing units. The owner of that complex lives out of state and had a desire to divest himself of those properties. Tuze Construction and Metro Plains formed a corporation and purchased the land and buildings. Tuze Construction is in the process of tearing down all the units and removing the foundations. Two alternate sites have been identified. One is located west of the Elks Building and east of the Drainage Ditch and the other is located in the Lutz subdivision. The proposal in its current state is the city will purchase five parcels from Tuze Metro Plains for $1.50 a square foot. Tuze Metro Plains will purchase the 23rd Street property for $1.75 per square foot and the second property for $250 a square foot." And then it goes into the differences between the two. So that was our discussions in what it would have been the, I assume, November meeting. And that is what leads me to say today that we have a moral obligation to purchase that land because that was the direction we were moving in.
I have a question. Mr. Kessel, Metro Plains and Tuze, did they have to purchase the land that the destroyed apartment buildings were on and able to have the right to construct the Section 8 housing?
I don't believe they had to, had to purchase those to have the right to build elsewhere. I think it did facilitate the new construction that we're seeing, or we're hopefully going to see. But whether or not they absolutely had to, I guess I can't answer that definitively. Mr. Tuze is in the audience, that may be a question he may be able to answer better than I.
Mr. Commissioners and Sean. Thanks for calling me at the last minute, Sean. But we had to, we had to buy the land and we had to facilitate the land sale within about a 14-day period to declare a state of emergency on that property. And without the agreement with the city on the transfer of land, those 30 housing units would have went back into the state role on November 15th. So Dickinson would have lost those 30 Section 8 units.
Had you not bought the property?
Had we not bought the property.
And that's a state rule?
It was a rule that Mr. Palmeroy and Mr. Dorgan helped us get around because with the Section 8 housing, you can't change a legal address of the property. And by declaring a state of emergency, we could keep those housing units within the city limits of Dickinson. And we had to purchase that property, which I purchased personally, and purchased the property and then declared it as a state of emergency. And then we worked with North Dakota Housing and the Section 8 contract before November 15th to hold it within the city limits of Dickinson.
And who declared the state of emergency?
North Dakota Housing Finance and, I forget the gentleman's name, I'm sorry.
Mike Anderson?
Yes.
He's, he's in charge of the North Dakota Housing Finance.
And he is also the gentleman that also added, I'm not sure of the number right now, I think we're up to 54, to, since we did that, they added another 24 Section 8 contracts for the city of Dickinson. And it looks like with Mr. Stinson's help and by me formulating a partnership with Mr. Stinson, that we could go up to 60, as long as we do it in 2010.
Mr. Jackson, other questions?
I think that answers my questions. One other detail thing, everybody comfortable with $1,000 down or $1,000 escrow with Metro Plains?
I think it's a fair question, Commissioner Jackson, and one that I actually questioned myself when it was first offered. These Section 8 housing contracts are cumbersome, at least for any layperson to go through. They invest a great deal of money to make these things happen on the front end without actually knowing that they're going to get the contracts on the backside. Certainly, any developer also experiences a great deal of upfront costs. But again, the intent is to recover and add a new low-income housing. And so for that reason, I present you with a contract or purchase agreement that has a lower amount of earnest money than usual.
I have a follow-up question then, since I think if we approve the consent agenda as is, what we're doing is not only approving this consent agreement, but we're also authorizing the city to buy the land on the south side. Would you be, what order do you intend to do this in if we approve this? Would you be buying the land on the south side before this purchase agreement between the city and MDI is executed?
The intent, original intent was to do them all as close to possible. The actual execution of it, as this has evolved, is we would actually execute the south side purchase first and then the purchase by Metro Plains would occur down the road.
What if there's a hiccup with Metro Plains and we bought the land on the south side with the moral obligation to do this, to facilitate the construction of the replacement units, and then if there's a hiccup, that doesn't go through? How would, how would you deal with that?
That is a risk we face and the intent would be for us to take that land on the south side, subdivide it into single-family dwelling lots, and then sell those and recover our costs as best we can. I've mentioned we have at least three people who are interested in those lots as we speak. We've received those phone calls. So I'm suggesting that we still may come out at least even on the deal, even if the Section 8 housing doesn't get built.
Mr. President, I have a question too. Like, we're not giving Tuze Construction any earnest money, so if you have a question about the $1,000, I guess they can question us too. It says no earnest money shall be required. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dufresne. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, but he's got full faith in the city government.
Yeah. Don't try to spend it. You know, I agree that it's not at all unusual for these transactions, relatively complicated, for the buyer to want, ability to walk away and not leave a lot of your money on table. So I don't find it that unusual in circumstances like this for them not to put up that much money. There is a, there is a risk that we've got to take. If we want, do we want to see Section 8 housing here, don't we? We could require, you know, $15,000 down, earnest money, and close in 30 days, which is our policy. But I think in these larger transactions, that needs to be tempered somewhat. Now, maybe the $1,000 is going a little too far, but I think there's some negotiation that has to take place.
I guess I'd be comfortable with $1,000 if we close the south side after we close on the, selling the property on the north side. Because I, I think in answer to Mr. Frenzel's question of whether or not we want Section 8 housing, the answer is yes. You know, we not only need to replace the 30 units that we lost, but we do have a need for units beyond 30. And if, if Mr. Tuze has no objection, I mean, I'd be, I'm comfortable with going in that order. I think that would also maybe facilitate moving Metro Plains along quickly and without any bumps in the road, knowing that we're not going to close on that till we close on that, the land on the north side.
I'm okay with it. I'm thinking too, Tracy, there was a survey done to with Section 8 that probably is why they increased it to 54. I know, Sean, we were on that committee quite a bit with Mike Anderson, so that's probably why. More power to us if they give us 60, but we'll take the 54, I guess.
Actually, within the survey that you're speaking, the Section 8 housing was over 100. I believe the number was 120, so...
Really?
The two, the two problems that we have is that Sean wanted the land from us on the south side because he has interested parties. The second problem that we have is, Mr. Frenzel's absolutely right, the Section 8 housing is very cumbersome. One of the problems that we have right now, to keep this thing moving along, we need to exchange the properties. That's slowing us down because right now, we're on a hypothetical property. And we already have 12 units approved, which is on Mr. Stinson's property that he owns. The other property that we have in question, the two other parcels, we need to do something on those two parcels to get them in to the MDI 103, to move it forward so we can have approval here by February 1st. After that, we're looking for a third parcel of ground that is in the 23,000 to 24,000 square foot range that we can't agree with Mr. Soren on. He doesn't like the locations that they like and for doing LoMars and some other things around the city, so. Anything we can do to facilitate the property switch is, I know that there is a, is a risk, I guess, I knew, there was a risk the day that I wrote the check on this deal and entered it in with Mr. Stinson. But the chance of him not doing Section 8 in Dickinson is very low right now. One of the things that are greatly helping the, I guess, the paperwork battle is Mr. Anderson at North Dakota Housing. I don't think that it would look kindly on Mr. Stinson if we wouldn't build the units that he's acquiring. We're talking about a guy that, I feel pretty confident with my partner, he's got like 1,700 units in North Dakota. So I think the chances of him not building at least 30 are slim and none.
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner.
Mr. Tuze, I believe that we have dealt with Mr. Stinson before, correct?
You have, yes.
East Villard Terrace?
Yes.
Some other properties in town?
Just in Dickinson, he owns Villard Terrace, Villard Square, Prairie Avenue. Worked with Mr. Soren on redeveloping Nockway Drive. He owns the whole south side of what's now Meadows Drive. He owns the old Pioneer Haven. Mr. Renner still owns a portion of that. He owns the other portion.
And I believe he was our second alternative to the Elks reconstruction downtown.
Yes, in the...
So there's history there with Mr. Stinson?
There's, there's lots of history in Dickinson with Mr. Stinson.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Do you, would the commissioners prefer to remove this item from the consent agenda and vote on it separately?
I think that would be more appropriate.
Well, then, I think we'd need a motion to remove item D from the consent agenda and place it as item, what comes before A in the alphabet? We'll do it right before the November financial report. But if someone would move that motion, we would...
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second, to move this item from the consent agenda and place it under general issues/finance. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Dufresne?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll now move back to the consent agenda. Are there any other items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Hearing, no discussion. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Dufresne?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have another time, or we have some timetable agenda items. We have a 2010 census update by Lori Jordine, so Mrs. Jordine, welcome.
Thank you again for having me. I will just give you a quick update from my last presentation back in October. Stark Development Corporation and the Dickinson Complete Counts Committee has been very busy laying the groundwork for what will now be a ramped-up campaign starting here in January. The Dickinson Complete Counts Committee applied for funding. Back in October, we had four different subcommittees that applied for different items and all of the funding was approved through the U.S. Census Bureau, which was really exciting as we were the only applications approved in all, in all of North and South Dakota. So that was pretty exciting, which includes the 40-foot banner over Highway 22. We have 1,000 table tents to be distributed throughout the city and the county. Today, I dropped off 2,000 flyers that'll be distributed at DSU and their bookstore when all the students come back for the second semester, buying their books. I've approached hotels today, I've approached banks with different items that we received. And I do want to extend a sincere thank you to all the businesses. It's just been phenomenal, the response I get. I've never once walked in and had somebody turn me down or say, "No, we're not interested." So a big sincere thank you to all the organizations that have accepted the items that we have. Back in November, I was also able to be on two talk show radios, which we were able to kind of key on the snowbirds kind of agenda. I got many, many comments on just information that they received and that they would be getting it to different snowbirds that they knew of that possibly already had left or some that would be leaving. Today, I also mailed out a packet of information to the faith-based community, to approximately 33 churches in the area, giving them little bits and pieces that they can put into bulletins and flyers to be, have announcements made into their churches. So that was, that was a good target area that we were concentrating on. I'm also making an effort in the community services area. The community services are a key component into reaching a much-targeted population for the census data. One thing that I've run across since day one is the question, what's the census for? What does it do? And I think throughout this whole campaign, that we really need to market that and make sure that everybody is informed of what it's for. It's not just one more person on the map. This morning, I spoke to the Stark County Social Services, approximately 40 or so staff members. I will be also speaking to the Badlands Human Services, approximately 60 staff members, along with 10 of their region council. I believe that's next week. Community action has also allowed us to place a census flyer in approximately 300 commodity baskets, food baskets that they sent out over the Christmas time. Elder care will be distributing a flyer for us at the end of the month. Southwest District Health Unit is also interested in information right after flu season. Able Incorporated also has taken information. And I found out through investigating into these community services, there's, there's many services that I would have never even thought about. For example, there's a senior low-vision service where individuals will go into a senior's home who still wants to live by themselves, but they have low vision. So they'll go in and readjust the knobs on their stoves and make them bigger, they'll help them read the mail every day. And these are the type of individuals that will be helping them read their mail on a daily basis, will probably see the form first and be able to help them. So I approached that individual, gave them a bunch of information, so that was a good lead. One important area that was brought to my attention about a week and a half ago is how the forms will be distributed. And this wasn't brought to my attention earlier. In our A-County region, only Stark County will receive a mailed form. All the other forms in the other counties will be distributed by a U.S. Census worker. They'll either be brought to their home, ring the doorbell, give it to them, or actually dropped on their doorknob and such. So that is, you know, there was some information that went out earlier. I even saw it on the North Dakota AARP website that everybody will, will receive a mailed form, and that's actually not true. In our area, only Stark County will. Now, come February, the U.S. Census Bureau will be announcing their be-counted sites where individuals can go if they do not receive a form. If they receive their mail at a P.O. box in Stark County, they will not receive a mailed form. These be-counted sites have to be approved by the U.S. Census Bureau for handicap accessibility, privacy and such. Two areas that we've, or two places that we've applied for would be, one is the Chamber Building and the other one is the Sunset Senior Citizens Center. And we're looking even for possibly one or two more to have in our area. I will be attending the state Complete Counts Committee meeting in January 25th, and it's to my understanding that Governor Holman will also be there. And it'll be kind of a brainstorming session where everybody within the state that's doing some type of census... some type of census campaign can throw their ideas at each other, see what's working, see what's not working, and that. And as new information comes my way, I'd be happy to come back, you know, next month and update you on anything that's, you know, come to my attention. And if you have any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Good report. Any questions for Mrs. Jordine?
Lori, for the benefit of the public, just basically, federal law says that all snowbirds should be counted in Dickinson.
Right. The way it is stated is where you live and sleep most of the year is where you should be counted. So if we have snowbirds that leave three, four, even five months, but they're here six months and a day, they need to be counted here. And one important piece of information is census forms that are mailed will have a barcode. Back this past spring, when they had the GPS handheld computers, they put in the addresses. That is where the form will come to. So when you fill it out, it's barcoded to that address. So if our snowbirds fill something out in Arizona and they receive a mailed form down there, it'll be barcoded to Arizona. So what they need to do is wait to come back here, and either if they have that form that was mailed to their address, if they have relatives picking up the form, they can fill out that form, or go to a be-counted site in April, which will be only available for approximately four weeks. Other than that, be approached by a census worker.
Okay. How about college students?
College students, same thing. If they're in Dickinson, DSU, for more than six months and a day, they need to be counted here, including international students. And a lot of people don't realize that. It's because of who is using our infrastructure. They're using our roads, they're using our healthcare clinics. That's where the critical funding comes. $400 billion every year is available in federal and state funding, and I think, you know, our area needs its fair share, and the only way we can do that is get accurate census count.
Okay. Nursing home residents should be counted here?
Nursing home residents should be counted here.
Are there any other categories that someone might question?
Well, I've been in talks with the Census Bureau about what we call group quarters. We, I asked if we could get the codes for these group quarters, such as universities, nursing homes, assisted living centers, retirement homes. They're going to be going in January and February and going and giving these certain quarters a code. They can't give us that information. I was kind of hoping that they would, and then we can target them as such. But that one's kind of out of our hands.
Okay. Thank you.
So Lori, then Bowman County, Billings County, all of them will be hand-delivered?
They will all be hand-delivered.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Are they aware of that, are the county managers?
I don't believe so. I did meet with a group down in Bowman, who is interested in starting a type of committee for some awareness, and I did make them aware. But as a, you know, overall awareness, I just learned this out about a week and a half ago.
So that's different, what we were originally told that they would be?
Right. And it could be a big concern. People are waiting for the, something in the mail.
Not everybody will be home when they're...
No.
Mr. Kessel?
President Johnson, Mrs. Jordine, if a snowbird attends a be-counted site in Arizona or Texas, wherever they happen to be, can they visit that site and still be counted in North Dakota? Can they tell them, "I want to be counted in North Dakota, not wherever they currently are"?
That's a very good question, because I brought that up to the U.S. Census Bureau, and they said, "Well, let me find out." Because my question was, they're barcoded to your address, but these be-counted sites are supposed to have an extra page of information where you can write in your address. So that was exactly what I said. Can they pick up one in Arizona, fill it out, put their North Dakota address in and mail it in? And I haven't received that information back yet if that's... Or are the be-counted site forms coded for Arizona or wherever they would be? I don't know that yet, but I'll certainly, when I find out, I'll pass that along.
Any other comments or questions? Well, we'd certainly like to have you come back in February and give us an update. It's, again, it's real important that our citizens fill these forms out and fill them out accurately.
Absolutely. And I'll certainly be back in February.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a second timetable item, and that's a tornado abatement. So, Mrs. Zent?
Thank you, President Johnson and Commissioners. We have six property owners that have filed a property tax abatement due to the tornado damage to their properties. Again, a 50% reduction was given to these properties on the valuation if they were demolished or not livable for the remaining six months of that 2009 taxable year. I did attach a spreadsheet showing you the properties and, again, the total 2009 value and then the post-tornado total true and full value. In those eight houses, there was approximately a $500, $1,000 decrease in valuation with these properties. I guess I am recommending approval of the abatements due to the tornado damage affecting them.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Zent. You have the information in your packet. Do Commissioners have any questions or comments on any of these properties?
I'll move for approval of the abatements.
Second.
The motion, the second. Any discussion? If no discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stukart?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the non-timetable agenda, and the first item we have there is the item regarding the property on the south side and the north side relating to the Section 8 housing. We've already had quite a discussion on that, but certainly continue discussing it if Commissioners have more to say or more questions to ask.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase agreement.
Second.
I have a question. When you say purchase agreement, now, are we just talking the one between MDI and the city? Have we, we haven't acted on a purchase agreement between us and Toos on the south side? Have we not, I mean?
Correct. We've not acted on any of the three purchase agreements before you. They've simply been reported to you.
There's one for each piece of property?
Correct.
All right, so, Mrs. Stukart, well, let me ask Attorney Coleen a question. Do these require, since there's three agreements, do they require three separate motions?
Mr. President, maybe not. If Mrs. Stukart's motion encompasses all three agreements, you can pass them all, approve them all in one motion.
Okay. So, Mrs. Stukart, is your motion?
Yes, I said agreements.
For all three, okay. And who seconded that?
The second.
And that was Mr. Frenzel. Now, if we pass the motion, I'm assuming Mr. Kessel and his staff have the authority to execute these in any order they wish to do it. Is that okay?
Yes.
I agree.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Net on the motion. Mrs. Stukart?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. At this time, we'll hear the November financial report. Mrs. Johnson?
Mr. President, Commissioners, I'd like to highlight a few items from the financial report through November. I have some slides as well. We'll begin with the monthly fund cash balance report. The balance in our general fund is $3.3 million at the end of November, which is $72,000 or 2.3% less than last year at this time. And our West River Community Center major maintenance reserve decreased $90,000 due to repairs this summer. This is the first year that expenditures have been made from this reserve, and there'll be an additional $71,000 in December. In our account and investment balances report, shows the balances held in our checking and investment accounts totals $28.9 million through November. Of that amount, $12.9 million is in our general investments, $10.4 million is in our pension funds, $3.5 million is in the Dickinson Future Fund, and $1.5 million is in our general checking and money market accounts. In our revenue report, with 92% of the year completed, our total general fund revenues equal $7.1 million through November, and were 96% collected compared to budget. Of that total, our current property taxes equal $2.9 million and are 99% collected compared to budget. Our building permit revenue is $159,000, which is 133% collected compared to budget and about 20% more than last year. Our oil and gas production totals $660,000, which includes $520,000 received in September due to a legislative change to the tax calculation, which now guarantees us at least $500,000 each year. And our municipal court fines total $138,000, which are 31% less than last year. In our enterprise funds, our water distribution fund revenues total $3.1 million and are $190,000 less than last year. And our solid waste fund revenues total $1.9 million and are $128,000 more than last year. In our expenditure and capital outlet report, our total general fund expenditures equal $6.9 million through November and were 92% expended compared to budget. And our enterprise fund expenses together totaled $4.6 million and were 94% expended. In our additional reports section, our sales tax schedule shows that we received $314,000 of 1% sales tax revenue and $157,000 of 0.5% sales tax revenue in November, which is up 2.4% for the year. In our sales tax breakdown, in the 1% sales tax fund, we have paid out $515,000 in job creation and senior program subsidies and $1 million towards the Badlands Activity Center. And in the 0.5% sales tax, we have paid out $828,000 towards the West River Community Center bond. In our hospitality and occupancy tax breakdown, we have paid out $1 million from the hospitality tax, which included $800,000 to the BAC, and $215,000 from the occupancy tax through November. Our street projects breakdown report shows we expended $1.8 million towards streets, sidewalks, and trail projects through November. Those are some of the highlights of the financial statements. Are there any questions?
I have a question on our revenues, our general fund revenues. Our fees and services, we were budgeted to receive almost $387,000, and our revenues to date are about $83,000, which means we still have over $300,000 remaining.
That line item includes our administrative fees, which come from our enterprise funds, and that transfer is made in December.
Okay, that's, all right. And so we're going to be on budget or very close there?
Correct.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none, would there be a motion to accept the financial report?
It's all moved.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stukart?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Move to Item B. This is a consideration to approve Mr. Glenn Rochell to be a member of the Civil Service Commission. He would fill the unexpired term of Todd Davis, and that term would expire on December 31st of 2011. Mr. Kessel, anything else you'd like to add there?
I'd like to add that Mr. Rochell is, comes to us with a certification in human relations. He's a senior professional. He has a great deal of experience, both in teaching. The Civil Service Commission also reviewed this application, and they are making the recommendation to the commission to appoint Mr. Rochell to that unexpired term.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any comments or questions by City Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve Glenn Rochell for the Civil Service Commission position.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the appointment. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Stukart?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item, Public Works Director job description, and be under consideration to approve that job description. And, Mr. Kessel, would you like to further introduce that item, explain why it's on the agenda?
Certainly, President Johnson and Commissioners. The Public Works job description is, you could kind of look at as a resurrection of a job description that the city has used in the past. With the reorganization, the Public Works manager position over solid waits and streets is not going to be filled now that Mr. Cousy has retired. Instead, we are going to be splitting those job duties between the city engineer and the Public Works manager over water utilities and buildings and grounds. The city engineer will be taking on the streets portion of Mr. Cousy's former position, and the Public Works manager will be taking on the solid waste portion. By taking on the solid waste portion, it is my suggestion that the job description should be reclassed as a Public Works Director. That individual will have solid waste, water utilities, and buildings and grounds, which is very typical for Public Works Directors across our state. They will also increase the supervision of their staff from 14 to about 28 people. So the reclass would move this position up, one from a D-61 to a D-62. And that would be my recommendation this evening. I'll answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any comments or questions by Commissioners? Hearing none, would there be a motion regarding this item?
Mr. President, I move to approve the Public Works Director job description and reclass the Public Works manager.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stukart?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move to Tab 6, Public Works Engineering. Mr. Soren?
Thank you, President Johnson. City Commissioners, I wanted to take a few minutes and talk about the recent snow event that we've had and some of the challenges that we've faced in front of us. First off, we did have four contractors come in and help us, you know, over the 27th and 28th in regards to that. So I'd like to thank them for stepping up and coming in. That's Toos Construction, Big K Industries onsite, and Terry's Waters Works, which did most of the parking lots downtown. Through this event, you know, it's been a challenge for us. We've had a lot of staff hours put in. We've got 508 hours of overtime at this point right now. We, I'd like to thank all the departments. We had, the Street Department had several people working. Water and Sewer came in and helped us out. We had people out of City Hall that came down and drove a truck to help us through the event. You know, and so it's been a challenge all the way around. We've got, I think, about 15 inches of snow, which is always a challenge. And, you know, some of the costs we're looking at right now, we do have about $20,000 in contract labor. We've put about $8,000 into fuel just for our own equipment at this point, you know, and then, of course, all the overtime that we're looking at. And we're continuing to work on the cleanup. Wanted to point out some, I guess, just facts about, you know, we've got 130 miles of streets right now. Of those, we've got about 40 miles that are what we would consider priority one, priority two, and five miles approximately in the downtown area. Just to open up those roads to get them passable, we're looking at about, let's see, what do I got? 32 hours to get those roads just open. And then when you look at the other residential streets, which is about 85 miles, that adds another 43 hours of time. We do have six crews working on that, so when you, we calculate that out, it takes us about 13 hours just to open up the streets in a normal event. us about 13 hours just to open up the streets in a normal event, just to make them passable. Then, when we take and go back to try and widen them out, clean up, things of that nature, this, we have about three crews that we use. We just use our own. We haven't been using contract labor. It takes about 130 hours. It's three, so about 45 hours per crew to do that. So, with the crews we have, you can see it takes us about 60 hours just to go from opening them up to widening. And then, in an event like this where we're hauling a lot of snow, oftentimes, that requires us to go through the streets on six passes on some of them in order to get all the snow hauled out. And, just because it takes that many to pick up all the snow, and when we're doing that, it's an operation of 12 people. We've got 10 trucks running, a snow blower, and a motor grader to help clean up the streets. So, there's a lot of challenges out there that we go through. We are seeing a lot of experiences with the cars parked on the streets, you know, things aren't being cleaned up around them. We get the calls, and they want us to come back and clean those up. Well, that takes people away and slows down an operation to try and do that. We do have other contractors, local people, that pile snow in areas that are on corners, create sight distance problems, safety hazards. So, now, you've got to take someone away to go and look at those and try and clean up those areas, which created some challenges. So, you know, the sidewalks, driveways, when we're plowing, you know, we hear a lot of concerns with that. We certainly don't like to plow driveways shut, but we've got to get the snow off. So, we do take the time. We slow the motor graders, loaders down, try and turn the blades to carry as much of the snow across them as we can. Unfortunately, you can't get all of it, and it does plow back in. We're going to continue to look at our operations to see if there's things we can improve on and make it a better operation, but we certainly have had challenges when you start getting 15 inches of snow that you don't normally see when you have a four-inch snow, for example. So, we'll continue to look at it and work on it and see if we can improve our operations. And I do want to thank the guys for putting the time in and the hard work that they've done up to this point and are continuing to do at this point right now. We are starting at 4:00 in the morning right now to try and clean up some of the areas before the traffic gets real heavy and move forward with that. And hopefully, we don't get eight more inches on top of this before we get it taken care of. But with that, if there's any questions, I'd certainly entertain those and try and answer them that you've maybe have been hearing or concerns that you've seen. We'll certainly work to address them.
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
Mr. Soren, maybe you can update us and so on to the ordinances and how they deal with property owners, being apartment building owners where there's multiple apartments and/or condo associations and so on, and how it affects them. I mean, are they able to push our snow into the street for the city to pick up, or are they supposed to truck it out themselves? Or, you know, I'm seeing a lot of stuff pushed out and...
That's a good question. Basically, the way the ordinance is, downtown area, you can certainly push the snow off of the sidewalks into the parking area, and we pick it up. It is not intended for any parking surfaces that are on private property to be pushed out into the street. And we do see that quite a bit, too, where they'll clean out their whole parking area and shove it out into the street, and then, of course, we have a traffic issue there that we have to go back and try and address.
So, do we notify those property owners? You know, I can see several around town where they're pushing, and now we've got one-way traffic through there, kind of this deal, and that things getting...
As we get them, we certainly are trying to address them. We've, I believe, sent out a flyer in the utility bills notifying them of their responsibilities for snow removal and try to address it that way, but yes, we do.
Thank you.
I have one question, Sean. On the downtown area, the comments were that they didn't get cleaned out for like three days, so it was not only a problem for the people with the businesses downtown, but the people that were coming downtown, like to get prescriptions. What is our practice on that as far as getting the side streets cleaned?
For the downtown area, under normal circumstances, we try and start at the curb, pull it all to the middle, and then haul it out. In this one, what ended up happening with the amount of snow for us to get our pass through didn't allow us to get all the way to the curb to get it to the center and piled up. So, it got left, and then, when we come back, there were parked cars in areas and things of that nature. But the unfortunate part, with the miles that we had and trying to get through and open up everything else, it took us about five days to try and even get back around to where we're starting the cleanup process in those certain areas.
Is it the policy of the city to open up all 130 miles before you start cleanup?
That is what we've been to try and get everyone access out of their location, yes.
I have heard a handful of comments about, you know, snow wing gates. And I know we've had this issue presented to the commission in the past, and I don't expect you to do it tonight, but maybe at our next meeting, I would like to hear again the presentation on the pros and cons of snow wing gates. You know, I haven't been to Mandan or Bismarck, but I'm told that, you know, they don't have the issue of blocked driveways. So, I think we should hear more about that again, the pros and cons of them. And along with that, it probably wouldn't hurt if we have, if there are some records where we can just kind of maybe look back over the past 10 or 15 years or so, and how many snow events have we had? Now, we all realize last winter was a tough one, and then getting 15 inches of snow here this time also, but I know I've been in the community for 35 years, and it seems like more often than not, we've had open winters than closed winters. So, I'd also like to, if we can get our hands on some statistics, hear about snow events over an extended period of time here in Dickinson.
We can certainly see what we can find in regards to those. In regards to snow wings, that was one of my intents, intentions was to look more into those. We've done some research on them. I'm not very familiar with them, as Mr. Cousy, I'm sure, has done extensive. You know, the one thing I am hearing, though, when you get snow events over five inches, it's really questionable as to whether you'd even leave them on at that point because of the stress that it puts on them. But I'll certainly do more research and try and bring that back to the commission at the next meeting.
Thank you.
President Johnson, if I may add, if you recall the legislative session, they established a snow emergency fund. We participated in that fund because of those winters last year, which technically were January, February of this year. That fund still exists, and we have submitted over $46,000 in expenses to be hopefully reimbursed through the state. The counties also added $100,000 to that list. So, we are hoping to receive some reimbursement of our expenses related to snow removal costs due to this last storm.
And that's a good point. You know, I'm often asked, you know, or I guess not asked, people will say, "We're probably really over budget on snow removal," and yes, we spent quite a bit of money on that, but it might not have covered all of our expenses, but those disaster funds that we receive for snow emergencies covered a very large percentage of them. So, we really, as a city, didn't suffer very much financially as a result of all the snow that we had earlier this year, or last year.
We certainly suffered more related to the tornado than we have due to the snow.
Right. We were reimbursed much more. I told you not to have a tornado. Other questions on the snow event or comments?
I would just, Mr. President, I'd like to have Sean just elaborate a little bit over here, Mr. Soren. Got to say the last name. When I got called about emergency, I know we have emergency crews ready, and all they have to call is 911, say if they're having a heart attack, they're having a baby, they just need to call that, and they will take them. Am I correct? They would go to their site first before anything else?
If we have an emergency call come in, we're certainly going to address that. In this storm, one of the things we ran into was the wind that came with it and stayed. So, we did have staff that was available in, like, that Saturday after Christmas, for example. Tried to plow some. It was blowing shut almost as fast as you could open it. So, we kept people on staff for that purpose. If there was a fire or we needed to go, we'd have people to man the equipment to go and help them get to the destination. If there was a medical emergency, you know, working with the hospitals and trying to keep those emergency routes open, certainly, we would work with those to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you. Did you want to comment on the code enforcement report?
Just a couple comments. It is the year-end report. You'll see the new building permits. We had 118 compared to 127 last year, down a little bit. But our values, you know, for the year was 57 million compared to 39 million, a large part of that being the Badlands Activity Center in value, but it's still up quite a bit. Other than that, if there's any questions, I would certainly be happy to answer them.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Soren. We'll move to Tab 7, Public Works, and the item we have there to discuss is the Cell 3 hydraulic improvements, and there is a resolution for us to consider. Mr. Kessel or Mr. Coleen, is there anything that you would say to introduce this item?
Thank you, President Johnson. We've talked this Cell 3 hydraulic improvements over several times at commission meetings. You've approved the, moving forward with that project. In order to do so, one of the requirements for the loan from the North Dakota Department of Health is that we would pass a resolution applying for that loan, making application to that, hence the resolution. And then, the second piece of that is appeased by the ARRA funds or the stimulus dollars so that we recognize that there are responsibilities in accepting this loan that we must fulfill, like paying Davis Bacon wages, buying American and such. So, it's just a recognition that there are certain responsibilities that we have, and then passing the resolution, authorizing application for the funds.
I get a kick out of the federal government, and here, under their reporting requirements, they tell us there are many reporting requirements, most of which are not yet finalized, but they want us to agree that we will follow those even though we don't know what those are yet. I suppose we can do that.
Mr. President, it's kind of like getting a mortgage. Either sign or you don't get it.
Is that... Well, that's the way it used to work. That's why we're in a big problem as a nation right now. Hopefully, that's changed a little bit. Any comments, questions on this resolution?
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
Move to approve Resolution Number 24-2009.
Second.
We have the motion, and, Mr. Frenzel, did you second? We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. City Administrator has no report?
No, I've just been sitting behind my desk, you know, going to Christmas parties and such.
Okay. So, in other words, you're speechless. Tab 9, Accounts Payable and Payroll. Are there any payables that you wish to discuss or have questions about? Not, would there be a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Are there any items that any member of the city commission wishes to bring up or report Not, is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission? If so, step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Is there someone from the public that wishes to address us? Would be a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.